Evening everyone, I call this planning commission meeting to order tonight at six thirty one P M. Roll call please. Commissioner Winkler?
Present.
Commissioner Rivera?
Present.
Vice Chairperson Harvey?
Present.
Commissioner Abadi and Commissioner Taratha Baxter are absent for the record. Could everybody stand for the pledge of allegiance please? Ready, begin. Do you have any adjustments to the agenda?
Uh yes, Madam Vice Chairperson, uh we ask that you pull item C one from the agenda in the minutes.
Okay.
They'll be on a future agenda.
Okay, thank you. Item B, B one matters not appearing on the agenda. If you wish to address the planning commission concerning any item not appearing on the agenda and within the commission's jurisdiction, please raise your hand and be acknowledged by the vice chairperson. And at the time state your name and address for the record. The chair, the vice chairperson reserves the right to place a time limit on each person's presentation of three minutes. It is requested that longer presentations be submitted to the commission in writing. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak at this time? Yes, would you please come to the podium? And state your name and address.
Thank you, Michelle Hollinger, Victoria Homes, one seven nine Sylvia Court, Imperial, California. Thank you, um last week I was uh here in front of city council to let them know and invite them to our grand opening at Victoria Park. And I had mentioned uh that the planning commission and staff and PD also welcome. I'm not sure if that information got to you or not, but I do have information on that it's tomorrow night. And we would love for you to come see what you're doing in the city.
Awesome, thank you for the invitation.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here that has anything to bring forth that's uh an item that's on the, on the agenda? Okay. We will continue to, item D new business. D one reorganization of planning commission discussion action. Do we wanna push that? It's fine, move forward. Okay, um.
It is your choice if you choose to wait till the next meeting and continue as.
Or no, I was like to push it to the end of the meeting or should we just do it now? Okay. Alright.
I'm sorry?
No, I mean, we're gonna be uh continue with uh item D one.
Yes. You, you, you can or you can choose to put it over since you have two people absent, I would say that um. I don't think there's anything preventing you, for example, from appointing one of them if, if that's your choice. Oftentimes the price you pay for not. But, but I would say you could, you could put it over certainly, or, or you could proceed in their absence.
Okay, I think we all, we said we would proceed.
Okay.
I would like to make a motion to appoint Veronica Harvey as the planning commission chairperson.
I second that.
Motion carries three zero. I'll make a motion to um for Ruben Rivera for vice chairperson.
I'll second that motion.
Motion carries three zero. Okay. Alright, well, we'll continue on to item E public hearing. E one subject, public hearing discussion action recommend approval of conditional use permit twenty three dash zero six for Quentin Tucker for the construction of a sixteen foot six inch garage structure within a residential zone located at twenty six seventy six Dandelion Road. A P N zero six four dash zero one two dash zero zero five. I wanna open the public hearing at six thirty seven P M. And um we'll go ahead and start off with the staff report.
Good evening, Commissioner. Mr. Tucker is proposing to construct a sixteen foot six inch garage structure at his property located at twenty six seventy six Dandelion Road. A conditional use permit is required to allow the structure to allow a structure that deviates from the allowable twelve foot maximum height within a residential zone. The project is categorically exempt from C Q under section fifteen three zero three for construction of accessory structure. The public hearing was duly noticed in the Holtville Tribune and Callexico Chronicle on September twenty eighth. And notices were mailed out to property owners within three hundred feet of the project site. No concerns or objections were received. Staff recommends the approval of conditional use permit twenty three zero six for Quentin Tucker to allow the construction of a sixteen foot six inch structure with the agreed upon conditions of approval. And Mr. Tucker is here to answer any questions.
Hi, good evening. Do you have anything to add to um what staff's already reported in regard to your project?
Only thing is same height. I'm going up and beyond.
Okay.
I've seen that it says sixteen feet as compared to. I see, nevermind, is uh the garage? The eve on the garage and then the eve on the plan? Are they overhanging on, on each other? Uh I'm seeing some conflict there. Or am I looking at it incorrectly? And this, this is something we, we've gone back and forth with other projects this year. I- is this a an error in the, in the design here? Yeah, sure.
That's where my house is and the garage is gonna be there like that. What you're saying, the overhang on the top?
Mm-hmm. The, the overhang on the top, the, he's, he's overhanging the garage.
I have the contractor here, maybe.
Please.
There he is.
Depends on contact. So what's the question? Oh. Is the question the eve height too high or is it the, the top of the, the pitch of the roof? The, the eve is showing that it's actually over um the eve for the garage. And then, I mean, the garage is, it's in the blueprint is touching up against the projected project. So, so it comes out um another sixteen feet. So the house is running um what, north and south? Yeah. And then the, the garage is coming out another sixteen feet to the west. So it's, it's not showing the dimensionals here, but basically, you know, the, the pitch of the roof, it's all a, a five and twelve pitch. It runs east and west and then just turns back to the, or it runs north and south and then turns back to the west, all the same roof line. So the, the garage itself, the roof is the same, but the ceilings are, you know, lower, they're twelve foot inside the garage. So it's just to carry that same roof line all the way through. Instead of stepping down.
So did Madam Chairperson, once, once they're done, I suggest that they share that discussion since we are in public. That they share whatever it is so that it can be on.
I apologize.
We'll let you.
Yeah.
Alright, so we just saw the same thing? Yeah. Explain it so we can put it, we can keep it on the record. Okay, so. So the way, so your overhang, your eve overhang is what's in question here? Um the eve does die off into the existing home. Um but it's the garage itself, um it is sixteen six. But the eves are gonna be at twelve six, just like to plan, so I'm not act- sure what the question is really. Well, from my understanding, though, there needs to be, there needs to be a, some, some space between here, you have, you have two eves that, that are just one right above the other. Uh well, one eve, one eve is running east and, or north and south. And then it's also the east and west one is going to be higher, right? Yeah. So it's gonna, you know, essentially, you know, hit down and connect. But the, because the width of the garage is not the same width as the house. I guess you could say, you know, so the fascia would not align completely.
I think we've had just in the past a few discussions fire code wise, so I wonder if you could address this one for the.
Yeah, so the one, if I understand it correctly. Um so there's in construction practices, that's, that's not gonna be an issue. Um yeah, no, no issues at all, I mean, as long as you get the water out of it somehow. Um there's some situations that you can have, you know, a six foot separation um from the tile to the overhang, so it's not a problem.
Anyone else from the public have any questions or comments regarding this project?
We have no objections from, no, no feedback from the community.
Commissioners, any additional um comments, Commissioner Winkler? No?
I don't have any, that was my only concern, that, that was, was, was blurring uh to me. Uh and we've, we've argued, we've haggled that back and forth on at least two projects this year, so I just wanted to make sure we, we ca- we stayed consistent on, on that, and I apologize, uh I'm not a, I'm not a contractor or a designer, so.
Sounds good, so um I'm going to head, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing now at six forty five. And um do I have a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to move uh to uh for the uh approval of a conditional use permit two three tax zero six.
Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Roll call please. Motion carries three zero. Alright, thank you very much. Good luck with your project. Okay, moving on to item E two. Public hearing, uh discussion action recommend approval of the Victoria Ranch specific plan amendment update to reflect land use changes, current information and conditions. I'll open the public hearing at six forty five P M and we'll continue with the staff report.
Good evening, Commissioners. Um the developer submitted a specific plan and annexation application back in two thousand and three for a proposed mixed use development project to include residential, commercial and community facility land uses. Their specific plan was adopted by the city of Imperial in two thousand and three. And the annexation was approved by LAFCO in two thousand and four. In two thousand and eight, the Victoria specific plan was amended primarily as it relates, at as it related to a change in zoning designation for the original unit four A development. This two thousand twenty three update is based on the proposed amendments to the original adopted and previous amendments as it relates to the change in zoning designation for unit four B, unit five B, five A and unit six A. This specific plan amendment update, updates the Victoria Ranch specific plan to reflect land use changes in current information and conditions. The overall footprint of the project site remains the same. There are no material changes as it relates to the project site's overall land use segment and land use densities which are primarily the uh a factor in assessing the environmental impacts. The the um staff report is showing as part of your atta- as a part of as an attachment that land use designation that it's currently being um reflected. The public hearing was scheduled for tonight, uh was duly noticed in the newspaper. Uh and notices were sent to property owners within three hundred feet of the property and the staff recommends the planning commission uh to approve the item, and I'll stay for any question that you may have.
Um so the overall density has not changed, cuz I, I seen some of some of the particulars have changed, but the overall density has not changed.
Right, so it changed throughout the years. Um so it's, it was an amendment in oh five, oh eight, twenty seventeen, eighteen, twenty twenty, twenty twenty one, and this one. And it's changed throughout the years, so now it's reflecting. So this amendment, twenty twenty three, it's not um increasing the density is what was approved. This is our, to show the current conditions of the land use.
I, I went through changes, um and I if I had just got to the overall density had not changed, I could have saved a lot of reading time, so.
It's a lot of scribbles.
Um and one of the things that, that in the, the applicant is here. Um one of the things that we wanna add to uh the conditions of approval is that we wanna um somehow the city wants to reserve the right to make com- additional comments when they start submitting the improvement plans. Um we found that some of the developments um a- after they had been constructed, um I would be having a lot of traffic issues, you know, not, not enough stop signs, uh speed lines, just to name a few. Uh we get a lot of complaints on those long stretches, um and then we'll bring those items to you. Uh we identified a few areas that might have issues um which are included in specific plan that we have the ability to make comments. But I wanna, I'll make sure that in case something happens with this development, you know, it's changes ownership and whatnot, uh there's a clear, clear condition of approval to it.
And before the, the actual change um of ownership, our point of contact there as per the text would be the planning director. Correct?
Correct.
Okay, alright. I, I tell you, I read this thing backwards and forwards.
And we have the developer just to confirm that, that we had the uh conversation.
So at this point, we're, we're simply sitting here and vetting that the plan is complete.
The planning is complete, is this amendment reflects all the changes that have happened throughout the years. Uh I don't know if you were including some of them, uh we did an amendment on, on the uh the type of trees cuz there was an issue, a conflict with I E D, so all included here now. Uh the units that went through the planning commission and city council of five four A, five A, six A, four B, just to name a few. So now if you look at the land use um on your third page, that's the current conditions. It's a, it's a, it's it's a document that is now clean and easy to understand. And should not be deviating from it. Oh, also, um one of the, and I would say one of the significant changes within the plan is that now we're specifying the issue that we had with the setbacks. We have the development standards, it's now twenty feet throughout the plan, no matter what.
So am I reading it correctly too that the major difference between two thousand and eight and two thou- two thousand twenty three? It's just some of the school facilities land went to actually, maybe it's backwards, some of the open park area went to the school facilities?
It went to school facilities and it was all included, um so we're just uh making. It was a conflict, it was like which area is it, uh where is it at? We had a land use map, um and, and it was on the two thousand and three. It was combined, school facilities with open space and we're like, okay, what's the actual area? So now it's, it's clear in this document, just to me.
And have we got positive feedback from those districts?
We have no feedback from anyone. Oh, I guess from those districts we got positive feedback cuz they got, you know, land for. Yeah.
And in. And this is for two schools, correct? Would anyone from the public want to comment on this project or add anything in regards to to the project in addition to what staff has already commented on?
Uh as for the, the traffic study, it's dated for two thousand and three. Um will we get an update on that, or I mean, I'm, I'm.
And, and I think I, I, in that conditional approval, I will add something that um we you know, we might need in the future. I don't foresee anything cuz on the, on the um traffic study, uh well, I would say that most of the uh conditions have been met, traffic signal on cross, traffic signal on Aitken Dogwood, just to name a few. All the improvements are being, have been completed, so and it's all within um um the, the, the roads, it's only, only within the development. Um I don't foresee um requiring a, an app study, especially visi- um I think have the ability.
I, and set me straight, um the specifics, traffic studies, and, and the only reason I bring up traffic studies is cuz we've had additional um development in that direction since two thousand and three. So the, the overall, the way that the traffic moves in the area without what we're about to, to approve is definitely going to, to change again. Now, those arguments, the considerations for the traffic studies, the considerations for the burrowing owl, um all those things, that's something that, that's now done at the city council, not at this point. At this point, we're just vetting that this document, that these documents, this package is done.
You are reviewing and recommending uh the city council to approve the specific plan amendment.
Okay, but, but there's no point for me to, to go back and forth on these specific things at this point, right?
I funny.
From a, a legal standpoint, as part of your recommendations, you could say, you know, we, we'd like to add an additional study or take a look at this. I mean, you could certainly include those things even though it's not specifically in the, the packet, so if you have concerns, it's certainly something to bring up.
Yeah, I mean, I just wanna, I, again, once after I read to it, I get to that specific part and I'm like, well I, I'm, I'm doing the work for the, for, for the next, for the next phase.
Expressing.
Do the commissioners have any additional comments? I don't at this time either. So I'll go ahead and close the public hearing at six fifty six P M. And um do I have a motion?
Uh I'd like to move to uh approve a resolution of. Um nine?
I'll second his motion.
At this point, should we add to the conditions of approval to add the ability to reserve the right for additional comments when submission of improvement plans occur?
That will be my recommendation to add a conditional problem with, with language.
I think we should.
So my recommendation clerk would be to add it as number eight in the resolution and we could just add it after the fact. Recommendation, although if you could be clear about what they're, and see if the developers.
Um uh I, I would like to add this language, um uh the city reserves the right to request additional traffic mitigation measures for any future traffic concerns within the development such as stop signs, sight distance enhancements, pedestrian crossing, roadway design or additional traffic impact analysis.
Yes, we are good with that, yeah. We added as number eight on the, the resolution.
Should we uh redo the motion to include that or?
Yeah, as long as the per- i- if the person who made the motion is comfortable with that, they, yeah, just repeat it.
Rub- uh Commissioner Rivera, are you um satisf- uh satisfied with adding number eight?
Yes, I do, I'm satisfied with that.
Commissioner Winkler, are you satisfied with that?
I am.
Okay. A roll call?
Be- before you take the vote, one, one other clarification. Your, your agenda item says that what you're doing is making a recommendation to the council cuz the council is the ultimate authority with respect to approval of an amendment to this specific plan. And it says that in your agenda, in, in the resolution, it basically references approves. So I would suggest a, a clarification that the, the, the approval is your recommendation to the city council to approve.
I'd, I'd like to uh make a correction to the record, I recommend for the approval uh to the city council. I'd I'd like to uh make a correction to the record, I recommend for the approval uh to the city council.
Motion carries three zero. Very much. We will continue on to item F commissioners reports. We'll, I'll start um to my right with Commissioner Winkler.
I just wanted to let Leslie Holmes know that I did receive the invitation and I encourage the fellow commissioners to go out tomorrow night to take a look at. The new um home that you guys are building, the new product that you guys have, it's good to see development coming to the um, you know, to Imperial and keep it going. And that's all that I have.
Commissioner Rivera?
Um, I just from my standpoint, I've seen Ms. Hollinger here before um stand front and center uh on her. On her projects, uh, it's very commendable, uh, and in due respect, uh, our actions speak louder than words, I will be there. Um, as for it's I've, this is my first uh meeting back uh for the summer. The um vegetation on Aitken, on Aitken and Morning Glory, it's starting to block the stop sign. Uh, and then this week I've seen uh at least on three different occasions, cars just driving right past. That stops, and I think they just had a traffic accident here a couple of days ago. Aiden and Morning Glory? Yeah, it's good. Completely covering it, and that's on, that's during the day, so. Graffiti? Um, that's all I got for 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 tonight, I apologize.
I don't have anything tonight, so uh staff reports?
Um, I have a quick update, um, last week, um, at city council meeting, um, I was asked what an update on Belfort and Northerly Pro Avenue. Intersection, the one will be completed, um, at that time, um. My answer was three weeks, um, but we got an update today, I mean, it looks like early next week we'll be. We'll be open, striping fourteen days after, but we'll be able to open eighty six in in the intersection on Belfort and Imperial Avenue.
Have anything?
Just very quickly, ma- man of vice uh chairperson, uh, the first Imperial Signature event. October twenty first, three o'clock, Fiesta Fiesta de los Muertos, state of the city. Hope you can all make it. Thank you.
Have anything?
To add to that, um, our department will be there handing out our compost pails, um, you can find us in front of Johnny's.
Okay, great. City clerk?
Oh, not at this time, thank you.
Alright, with that being said, I will adjourn the planning commission meeting until the next regularly regularly scheduled meeting. Um, October twenty fifth, twenty twenty three at six thirty PM, thank you, everyone.